Good afternoon and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Cablecast Post Agenda on the Oakland Business Improvement District, or O-Bid, for April 30th, 2025. And for the record, we are joined today by Councilmember Bob Charland, and others might join us as the meeting proceeds. And I want to welcome our guests from the Oakland Business Improvement District. Thank you for coming down and for all the work that you do every day. I will turn it over very quickly, but just to provide some context for the reason for the timing of this and why this hearing, why now? There could be a lot of different reasons. I would say that the logistical reason is traditionally we have had both the both O-Bid and the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership, both of the bids that have a financial connection to the city and to city finances, present during our budget hearing season, which in looking at our calendar and putting our calendar last December together, we discovered is, and it wasn't a new discovery, but it was a new realization at just how packed that schedule is then. And because of that, maybe we don't get the same sort of participation or same kind of interest from council members. And even if we do have council members present, their minds are all over the place because of all the days of hearings that we're going through. So why not, if we're going to have a hearing, hold it at a different time of year when we can be a little bit more present mentally and physically? And so thus the rescheduling for today, but you know, I think the other, the other obvious reason is Oakland is still, I believe, unless it's changed in the last couple of years, if it were its own city, it would be the third largest downtown in Pennsylvania. So it's like it's a twin city within a city and there's an incredible amount of work happening right now. You take a walk, a bike, a roll, a drive-through, and you see massive amounts of construction, which we know, we were just talking, is a little bit of inconvenience, but it means a lot's happening. There's a lot of, it's a center of commerce, and there have been some change, some changes in the staffing and the personnel at O-Bid. So I think it's, it's way well past our time for hearing a little bit more about what's happening in Oakland, what O-Bid's been up to, your vision for the future, and kind of an update for everyone to hear how things are going. So with that, I'm happy to turn it over to our invited guest. If you would like to introduce yourself and then anything that you'd like to share with us before we get into some Q and A.
Sure, that's great. Hi, my name is Sean Fertitta, and I just thank council for inviting us here today. Really appreciate that. I am the interim executive director of the Oakland Business Improvement District, and I am here, supported by my colleague Kelly McBroom, who's our director of operations. So like I said, it's an honor to speak before you today. O-Bid plays a vital role in strengthening our community and supporting the businesses and stakeholders that make Oakland so dynamic. For 25 years, O-Bid has been at the heart of Oakland, working tirelessly to create a thriving, clean, and safe environment. Leading the charge of that work over the last 20 years, my predecessor, Georgia Petropolis, has been instrumental in being a community leader, and I thank each of you for the proclamation that you awarded her. We serve 250 property and business owners, and we maintain nearly five miles of sidewalks and alleyways. During 2024, we planted over 300 flowers. Our ambassadors have removed over 15 tons of trash and cleaned up 700 pieces of graffiti, and our outdoor dining program saw over 300,000 visits. O-Bid's working with our community to keep our district clean and safe and vibrant for everyone. Since the installation of the outdoor dining areas during COVID, over 60 restaurants have increased their capacity by more than 250 seats, driving significant revenue growth and job creation. For example, Stacked saw a 32% increase in sales, creating four full-time jobs and eight part-time jobs, while Viva Los Tacos experienced a 27% sales boost, leading to nine new jobs. This investment in infrastructure directly benefits our small businesses and enhances the overall experience for employees, students, residents, and visitors alike. O-Bid's impact extends beyond the streets. We experienced significant growth in social media engagement last year with a newsletter open rate of 46%, which is well above national average. Through social media influencers and promotional campaigns, our marketing efforts drove traffic to the district, contributing to nearly 20 million visits in Oakland in 2024, with 8 million of those visits just to our district alone. Events like Glow Land, the Mindful Mile, I Love Pitt Day brought thousands of people into Oakland and created meaningful connections in the city. But perhaps most importantly, O-Bid is committed to fostering a diverse and inclusive business environment. Through Argyle Studio, O-Bid is supporting emerging entrepreneurs, especially those from underrepresented communities, by removing barriers and providing resources to help them succeed. Take Nabokindu Skincare. So this is a husband and wife team that started in Argyle Studio, and they learned about product research, distribution. They fine-tuned their marketing. They've since opened a storefront in Robinson Mall, and they're opening three locations in Africa. So in this next phase of Argyle Studio, this project, we'll be working with property owners to identify ways to attract and retain these local businesses. This work cannot be done without the tireless support of our board of directors, funding support from our property owners, grants and organizations like DCED and the URA, and our generous sponsors. Out of the $1.3 million budget in 2024, 43% was used to keep our district clean and safe, 21% was used for economic development, and 36% was used for administration. Oakland is more than just a business district. It's a hub of innovation, culture, and community. O-Bid is proud to work with our partners, including Carlo, CMU, Innovate Pittsburgh, OPDC, OTMA, UPMC, it's a lot of letters, and the University of Pittsburgh, Oakland's cultural institutions, and of course, all of our elected officials. Right? Ensuring that Oakland remains one of the most desirable and vibrant economic centers in Pennsylvania. Together, we're building a stronger, more connected future for everyone who lives, works, and visits our community. So thank you.
Thank you. Well, I really appreciate that beautiful kind of summary of everything that's happening in Oakland. We don't have a presentation, so therefore I will be happy to open this up to our council members that have joined us today. Councilperson Charland, you have a significant portion, as well as being a board member of O-Bid, you have a significant portion of Oakland that interacts with and is covered by the geographic area of O-Bid. So please, any, any comments or questions that you have?
Yeah, no, I'm glad you guys are here, and I think this is a good, a good way to do this, instead of having you come during the budget briefing season where we're all kind of slammed and our minds are a bunch of different places. I think, you know, this is a wise way to do this. You know, I, well, it is very cool for me to be able to be part of the things that you're working on. And I'm, the, especially the Forbes Business District, you know, is constantly evolving. And I think that's the thing that, that an organization like O-Bid is able to, to help with. We're in the process in the South Side of looking at possibly creating a bit of our own for East Carson Street. And we've talked a lot about managed communities versus unmanaged communities and how important that is. You know, you wouldn't, the Oxford Building is, is, you know, a great example of like, this is a managed building. This is the same square footage as East Carson Street. And yet, East Carson Street doesn't have management. It's just, you know, however we handle that. I guess what I, what I want to start off talking about is like, what are, how are you seeing in the evolution of the street? How are you seeing the, the Business District change right now, post-COVID? As we're trying to figure out where, like what the next steps are forward for a lot of our retail spaces? What, how are you seeing that evolve?
Well, sure. So, I mean, as Councilperson Strasburger mentioned, right? Oakland is under an enormous amount of development right now, and so we are really fortunate. It's a lovely problem to have. With that, we have to grow with it. So it just means that our services as a bid actually has to keep up with that. So keeping a clean and safe district is instrumental in bringing businesses to Oakland and keeping them there. So things that we are currently working on is knowing that there's going to be so many more people coming in with this development. You know, Kelly, again, our director of operations, has been really kind of cleaning up our sidewalks, eliminating some of the obstacles that are in the way, just to make more room for people and anyone with strollers or using wheelchairs or whatever their mobility needs may be, just trying to make as much room for everyone as possible. We're also, again, working with our business owners, our retail managers through a stakeholder engagement committee, trying to actually go through and actually hear what they need to be successful. And so I'm really excited for that piece because we can come to the table with as many ideas as we want, but unless we're actually benefiting our businesses, then we're still missing the mark. So the power of listening is hugely important. And then recognizing that our students are seasonal, dare I say. And if we, we've got to just recognize that Oakland is a community, and there's a lot of people who passionately live there, and we are there to serve them as well. So if we're all working together, I think that that's, that's the goal, right? So as more people move in, then the neighbors thrive, our businesses thrive, they stay open. So I see it, I see us all working together as, as the future of Oakland.
So one thing I kind of want to narrow down on, the Business District has a lot of places to eat, a lot of restaurant and dining. And I know that it's always been a stated desire to figure out, how do we get effective lab space, effective office space that can be kind of those, those spinoffs, those roll-offs of the university, especially in the, the kind of for-profit space, so we can tax them. What, how is that going? Where, what are your thoughts on that? Where, where do we stand right here in April of 2025?
Sure, so Oakland is part of the Innovation District and, you know, Innovate Pittsburgh and the Pittsburgh Innovation District, again, deal directly with those technology companies. And we are there in a capacity that we support all businesses in the district. But what I have heard is that Oakland's a little short on large lab space, like just the real estate alone. We don't have the, the square footage available to these companies. And so really trying to tackle that. So we are really concentrated on the ground floor businesses. But again, when those tech companies move in, because we have such incredible universities around that they can pull, you know, that talent from, again, it's about keeping people there. And, you know, from there, when there's that thriving community, then our business owners thrive.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's crucially important, that kind of that, it helps raise the prestige of our universities. It also helps build up the daytime business economy, you know, because everyone that works there has to eat somewhere. But also, like, you know, it creates this whole level of synergy in the district, this vibrancy. And I, you know, I know that there are challenges there, especially, you know, when we did the Oakland Plan, a lot of these decisions were made would be in a pre-pandemic world. And now we're like, you know, how do we, how do we fill space? And how do we make sure that the space is the right space? Because going to work means very different things for a lot of people now. So that's, you know, that's obviously going to be something I, I really want to continue to, to see what, what we're doing with that, how we're, how we're moving forward there. One, kind of in the specific, or in the nitty-gritty, I know that last year, yeah, it was last year. We, on the O-Bid Board, we looked at actually reducing, or we had to reduce the millage rate because we were overfunded at that point from what we're allowed to, what we were authorized to take. Where, where do we stand now as far as the financials of O-Bid?
Sure, I would love to say that we're overfunded. That is sadly not the case. So in our bylaws and in the resolution that we have with the city of Pittsburgh, there is a millage rate, and then there is a not-to-exceed amount. And with that, historically, again, so I took over from my predecessor, Georgia Petropolis. So I've been in this role since September. But for me, going back and looking through, I've not seen a millage rate higher than 3.7, and our max is 4.5. So with that, you know, through our budget process, you know, very similar to yours, we got to figure out what our core services are. We have to figure out what developments are coming into Oakland. You know, when a building gets demolished to make room for something new, there's actually, we lose revenue for that, for the building, for however long that they're in construction. So taking all of that into effect or into, yeah, taking all of that into, into mind, and then thinking about what our stakeholders are basically willing to pay for these services, all of that kind of feeds into it. So it's a little bit of an art and a science. And so we have not actually maxed out our millage. And this past year, we were also maybe a little late in doing it in our budget cycle. And so we knew that the economy might be a little questionable and so uncertain at times. So we actually decided, thanks to an amazing passionate board, that we were going to keep the millage rate the same. So for two years in a row, we've been at 3.54. And before that, we were at 3.7, so we did lower it two years ago. And that was based on the amount of development coming in. Again, when all of that development's coming in, we collect the assessments based on land and building values. So we were able to reduce that, knowing with all the development, we were still meeting our core services. So we'll see what happens in the coming year, just to make sure. But, you know, Kelly and I are really evaluating every service that we do, every program that we have, and making sure that every dollar that we bring in, that our stakeholders actually see the benefit of that.
And then really the last question I have, and I might have a couple more as we talk more. But what are you, what are you most excited about, you know, through the summer and through the end of the year here?
For me, I, I don't, we light up every time we get out into the district, and we get to talk to the, the people working behind the counters, to the property and business owners, just to the, the people on the street, just to see, you know, how they're enjoying their neighborhood. And so like, I love the people aspect of it. So, and I believe, Kelly, you would agree, it's, it's something that, that you've expressed your interest as well. So, but as far as that, it's really, it's bringing people together. It's bringing departments of the city together with, you know, PennDOT, with every, like, to really kind of solve some of these issues that we're having in Oakland as we grow, as development is coming in. You know, pre, pre-meeting here, we were talking about creating space for more loading zones, right? Because we have, let's be real, we've got a double parking issue, especially along Forbes Avenue with all of our delivery drivers. And I'm very thankful to all of our DoorDash and Uber Eats folks, but we've got to find a place for them and not in the middle of Forbes Avenue. So, you know, I love pulling people to the table and having those discussions. I'm, I want to have more discussions with, you know, our property owners about how do we really reduce some of these barriers, especially such an amazingly high price of commercial real estate in Oakland? How do we retain some of these local businesses and that it's not all chains, right? So these are the things that I'm really looking forward to tackling this year and in the foreseeable future.
All right, so that was my last one, but I didn't.
Go ahead.
The BRT is, is coming. And you're exactly right, the, the transportation plan of, of Oakland, you know, I've often joked that like, it's like hitting the jackpot if you can get down Forbes and if you, if you hit the timing right and there's no construction, you absolutely can do green lights all the way through. But it doesn't happen very often anymore now that, you know, it definitely doesn't happen if there's a FedEx truck in front of FedEx. But, you know, I guess that's a whole nother discussion. That's a big, but how are you preparing for when the BRT is running? There's going to be a whole lot of people that are going to be spending at least a small portion of time in Oakland. What, what's the, the preparation to make sure that when people are hitting their transfers in Oakland, that this is a place that they stop and, you know, spend a couple dollars? And or, or that this is a place that they want to have a meeting, you know, or to go to happy hour or whatever it might be?
Sure, so I can't wait for that to happen, right? Having that direct connection from here, the Hill District, you know, to downtown, you know, it's, it's an amazing service, and I hope people take advantage of it. We do have these incredibly nice stations coming in. So, right, first and foremost, first and foremost is like working with our partners to make sure that everything is maintained. So I really want to make sure that we are partners at the table for that. There are opportunities as a part of that project for public art. And so I think having public art in that space is going to attract people. I believe having these clean, well-kept sidewalks will make it really enjoyable for people. And it's up to us as far as sort of a, a marketing and promotions, you know, agency that we are working with our stakeholders, working with those businesses and promoting things like Restaurant Week. You know, what we used to call Taste of Oakland, we're now calling the Flavor Walk, where we're partnering restaurants with retail space. And so you can go into, let's say, Argyle Studio and have a little nibble from Stacked Burger. And we're, so we're trying to partner folks. So having these sort of activities, promotions throughout, I think is going to be great to have that. But also we have the outdoor dining platforms. That brings, I said, over 300,000 people, just last year used those platforms. We have the flowers, you know, making it pretty. People want to be in a space where they feel good. And so I think really it's up to us just to keep doing what we're doing plus and finding those opportunities to create space where just people want to be.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilperson. So I'll add some notes here. Can you speak a little more about the ways that O-Bid can deploy its economic development budget? What does that look like for O-Bid?
Sure, so, right, for me, economic development is sort of multifaceted. So mainly, my first priority is to keep our existing businesses open and connecting them to resources that are already out there that people may not know. So, you know, being an educator in that, in that realm. So even just yesterday, the URA in the neighborhood was a lovely program that we got to partner on. And so where the URA got to come around and we split up amongst teams and we introduced the URA to our businesses. So you need to make improvements, you want to expand, you need equipment, like, these are your options. So we need to do more of this education. We need to continue to support new entrepreneurs, right? And so again, it's, we did a retail strategy with ULEAD. It's a consulting agency, and they identified some major barriers. Again, the cost of commercial real estate is one of them. So again, pulling people together and figuring out how to reduce some of these barriers. And we'll, you know, Argyle Studio is doing great, and it was lovely to see Representative Frankel in there yesterday. And he just had a great time and seeing people light up when they walk into that space for the first time. It's, it's really, it's a wonderful experience. So again, training and education, working with your Office of Nighttime Economy on providing education for our businesses. We're also working with, we've got a new partnership with PAR in the University of Pittsburgh on harassment and bystander training, so that would be great for the South Side as well. So, yeah, we're just trying to come up, we're working with the IEE, the Institute for Entrepreneurial Excellence, and funneling some of our new entrepreneurs through there, working with our financial institutions for financial literacy. So we're really just trying to connect people to all of these amazing services that are out there that just no one knows about. Of course, the infrastructure, we've got the, I talked about the sidewalks, but we've also got the new pedestrian wayfinding signage that's going in. So that's a lovely addition for us. I would love to work to, and you're talking about the tech companies. I would love to continue to work on what connectors we can make to those other communities to make Pittsburgh and that tech company, uh, community feel even smaller, right? So we're more connected. And really just being community focused, like I've been saying all along, and like, you know, just realizing that we don't work in a vacuum. So I think all of that in total, you know, as long as we are listening to our stakeholders and really providing those core services and just listening, bringing people together, I think that's what's really going to create this, this, a thriving district.
Thank you. So convening, infrastructure, but like the convening part and the connecting part is a really big theme. So, and sometimes it takes money and sometimes it doesn't. It's just, you know, the, the human resources and that, that, that time that it takes to cultivate relationships, to be a hub. You mentioned the Streeteries program, and I have to say, O-Bid was an incredible resource to our office during the early days of the pandemic and the first year or two, when no other business district, many other business districts, particularly those that aren't as kind of well organized, had a model for Streeteries and for getting their restaurants outside and bringing customers back in. So I have to, I've mentioned it before at this table, but I have to thank you all again for the resources that you provided our office, like basically just pro bono to say, this is how we made it happen, and these are the steps we took, and here's what you do, and here's how you think about it, whether it was, you know, full closures of streets like on Oakland Avenue or Streeteries. So that's been a, that's been a model for other streets as well.
Well, I will also add to that, kudos to everyone here and working in this building who listened and who like, we just know we need to do this for our businesses, for them to thrive, and we're going to like figure it out as we go along. So that flexibility, I truly appreciate.
There was a lot of building the plane as they were flying it, for sure, which is, yeah, credit to everyone at Domey and others to, to help make that happen and to ensure that they were also safe and, you know, accessible and everything. Do you have, do you know of any plans to expand Streeteries in other parts of the district? Do you have, do you know of any plans to expand Streeteries in other parts of the district?
Well, that comes back to, dare I say, you know, real estate issue. There's not a lot of, of open space right now. So I'm not, I'm not opposed because they work so well. But I think I would love to sort of tackle some of these sort of double parking delivery issues and if that space is better used for, you know, some of our delivery trucks, I would rather explore those options. So, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll see how that goes. But, you know, really excited and we just did a whole new refresh and everything here for the spring. So outdoor dining is, is open and exciting and just glad to, glad that it's still around.
Yeah, you know, hopefully we have a season that's free of Canadian wildflower smoke, free of spotted lanternflies, like we're finally going to have a summer where we can
I know, please, please.
Use our Streeteries in peace.
Right.
Thank you for that. And that makes sense. I mean, there's a lot of, there are a lot of different possible uses for curb space and not every single one can be a Streeterie, I understand that. Generally speaking, what would you recommend to business districts who are considering bid status? Are there certain corridors that lend themselves better than others or certain sets of corridors that are adjacent to one another?
Sure. I mean, right, these, these bids work really well in highly concentrated areas of businesses. You know, it, when there is such a high concentration, that it requires a level of service that one agency alone can't maintain. So if you've got a really high concentrated area of businesses and everyone is in support of it, again, it goes back to this building relationships. Because if people don't want it, you're not going to get a foothold. So, and then once you do have it, once you convince everybody, it's keeping those relationships going so they continue to see results and they continue to see value in the process. So, and I keep coming back to connection, but that's really been what we've been doing since we came on board in September is really just getting out, meeting people, seeing what has worked, what hasn't worked. And it's a lot, it's a lot of relationship building. And then once you have those relationships, it's about maintaining them. And I, I can't tell you how important that is for, for people who are considering, you know, starting a bid. It's like, once you, once you have the documents and everything is signed and sealed, that's when the work begins, right? It's, you, you've got to put the, the programs in place. You have got to show that you're doing the work and you need to keep listening and evolving with what's going on because those stakeholders are there in the trenches. They're the ones who are trying to keep their lights on and keep people fed and whatever it is. And I'm there to support them. And so just whatever I can do to help them out, that's, that's what we're going to do. Those are our priorities.
That's great. Thank you. I can't let the meeting go without, this hearing go without putting in a plug for what I am hearing on the street is what various, I don't know, I wouldn't call them business stakeholders, they're, they're consumers are asking for, which I don't think is a shock here. One is with all the closures of, you know, when there's new places coming in, but closures of some of the, the longer-serving institutions. A place where faculty and staff of our institutions can get happy hour, that is different from where their students go. That's something they're asking for. So that's sort of interesting.
We have weekly conversations with people.
I'm sure you do. I'm sure you do. And the other, as you know, is, it's been a conversation with Obid, it's been a conversation with OPDC, it's been a conversation with a number of different partners, but those gathering spots that don't involve alcohol or are 18 and over, music venues. The music venue is, I think is a big part of it, but even other types of ga, more flexible gathering spots that are, that are coffee shops, that are places that don't involve, you know, necessarily a bar or needing a, an ID to get in. So those are the two big ones that I hear about. And I know you're, you're laser focused on whatever power you have to attract that kind of business as well.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, but again, it's, it's, it's us pulling those landlords together and figuring out how we can best serve the community, all community.
Yeah, everybody, exactly. Anything further, Councilperson Charlin?
No, I just, you know, I'm, I'm glad to have you as individuals here. I'm also very glad to have Obid in the district, you know. Coming back to like the conversations about the pandemic and how, and post-pandemic, the bid was just able to be, both of our bids, the PDP and Obid, which, you know, you guys are, are very different, but, but also able to fill very similar roles and, and just being more nimble than government can be. And we're very fortunate to have you, you know, as you saw when we went to Dallas, the, you know, the areas like Deep Alum were able to be more nimble than the City of Dallas as a whole. And, you know, and I, I just, I think of that constantly, that like, how lucky we are to have organizations like Obid to help manage the, we, we don't know what the next challenge is going to be. But whatever that is, you know, your, your flexibility and your ability to pivot there. So just, you know, very, very thankful for our relationship.
Yeah, and we couldn't obviously do it without the support of you either. So, you know, again, it's just, it's everybody working together and, and a shout out to Jeremy and the Downtown Partnership. Jeremy's been a huge help to me in my transition and so I'm really thankful for that. And I think there's a definite opportunity as more bids come online that we are all here to support each other, you know, as an entire city, as a, as a, dare I say, a one big business improvement district, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And I'll just echo the, the thanks and for the work that you and your team do every day. It really is invaluable and, you know, demonstrates what we can do when we have creative structures like bids to augment the work that the city already does. City can't be everywhere, city can't do everything, especially cities like Pittsburgh. So really appreciate the work you do every day and thank you for your time this afternoon. Was there anything, any closing thoughts, anything else you'd like to say that you haven't already?
No, just I really appreciate the opportunity and I look forward to continuing the work.
Excellent. We look forward to that as well. Well, with that, we've exhausted the business of this post-agenda. I will adjourn this meeting.